Good afternoon, everyone. It is Thursday, November 18th. It is approximately 1:00. This is the regular meeting of the City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. We will now have our flag salute, led by our Director of Development, Jeremy Glynn.
Please stand. Ready, begin.
Thank you. Kristi, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Townsend?
Here.
Mayor Wile?
At this time, we will have a presentation from Mahala Vakaresku. And I hope, Mahala, I am not absolutely murdering your name too badly. Please come up. Mahala is the manager of the River and has some really exciting news for us and an update on what's going on there. So thank you. Thank you for being here today.
My pleasure. My pleasure. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you, Kristi, for all your help. Thank you. So, yes. As we were talking Monday, I actually have...
Give me a favor.
Yeah, over here. I have a lot of exciting news about the River. As everybody knows, I'm the new manager at the River. We are planning a lot of events, a lot of events that I will talk about. They're still in process, either with Planning Department, either with the other departments that we have to follow the proper paperwork. But as you will see, a lot of good news. So, let's see. I think like here. I'm going to say a little bit about the River. So, the River at Rancho Mirage is a year-round outdoor destination for your family to gather your business to thrive and your friends to celebrate, featuring shopping, dining, and entertainment with an unmatched environment of style and beauty in the heart of Coachella Valley. With breathtaking fountains and waterfalls cascading through a 30-acre landscaping oasis, guests experience spectacular live music in the amphitheater surrounded by mountain views and fun-filled events. The River is also home to the largest supercharging station in Coachella Valley, shaped carports and valet parking we will have from this season. Valet parking. So, as probably already know, Monday, we had the ribbon cutting for the most beautiful art gallery in the city, I would say, Eminent Design. And thank you so much for participating. Thank you, Mayor, for coming over. And other restaurants that are coming over, and we already made all the arrangements with Citi. And I will show you the map, but I'll tell you a little bit about them. Is probably you're familiar with the big building right on the corner that used to be Flamings. Now, it's going to be Bobby Botina's Mexican and American Grill. Over here, they will present Mexican and American cuisine along with live music. Live music, from what I understood, it's going to be something like Michael Bublé style, very good quality music. Another place that we are planning to open will be Chaka Tea Shop. It's going to be the type of drinks, the baba tea drinks. They will offer milk tea and other type of teas. And the most, let's say, exciting thing will be Sushi Kawa. Sushi is going to be on the Bob Hope side. And over there, from what I understand, they have a very good chef. And they will present authentic Japanese restaurant with exactly a sushi bar, a very authentic sushi bar. So here is the map about our property. So sushi is on Bob Hope. Chaka Tea is kind of like facing the hot springs, facing Yard House. And Bobby Botina is the big building, Building CO-1. And as you see in front of CO-1, because it's one of the biggest restaurants that we have over there, we will have the Luxe Vale. And also, we will keep the same station like we had previous years on Bob Hope. Other events, like I said previously, we have a lot of events that we are planning. And we want to be very active at the River. But so far, what I can talk about is the Desert Art Festival. Desert Art Festival is presented by West Coast artists who will return to the River at Rancho Mirage for Thanksgiving weekend, November 26, November 28. Desert Art Festival will feature artists from throughout the western United States displaying their original work in all mediums of fine art and fine craft. Of course, we will have music. Enjoying new music artists all over the Coachella Valley every Saturday at the River at the amphitheater right in the middle in between 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. One of the good news that I can tell you is that now we have free Wi-Fi at the River. So you can work over there. You can access any applications you want. It's very exciting. I already noticed in the morning we have people that they've just come over there in our dining area and they take advantage of the free Wi-Fi. And thank you so much, everyone coming at the River. And of course, Luxe Vale will return at the River from this month, making parking way easier for everyone. Other events that we are working on will be... Every Saturday, we will have Palm Springs Cruising Association. Palm Springs Cruising Association will bring some of the best show cars in Coachella Valley at the River. And soon, we will bring you the Rockin' at the River. You will meet local vendors every Wednesday at the River while enjoying live music from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Rockin' at the River is still, I have to announce that it's still under the Planning Department approval. But hopefully, everything will go okay and we can have our vendors every Wednesday over there at the River. And next one, of course, we cannot miss the Christmas Tree Lighting Celebration at the River. So far, we are planning for something like December 3rd to have the tree lighting ceremony. We will see how the weather will permit and everything. But please join us for our annual Tree Lighting Celebration at the River, live music from Chuba Christmas and local musicians, as well as guests from local businesses and city speakers. So hopefully, you will honor us. And thank you so much for having me today. And like always, I'll keep you posted about everything what we are doing. And hopefully, we can get in compliance with everything. Okay, thank you so much. Have a beautiful day.
One minute, me. I wanted to comment to her.
Yes, please do.
Yes.
Somewhere around 15, 18 years ago, Richard Kite and I served on a committee of two where we had, at the end of the negotiations, we had the then-owner in agreement that they would build a two-story parking garage at the north end and at the northeast end. And we took a lot of time in those negotiations. The negotiations came to an end. We had the documents signed by us, delivered to the other person. And the other person didn't sign after committing. So I'm suggesting only that you remember our history. And we know you want to have parking coverage as much as you can reasonably afford. And we're with you 100%. And we're still looking to see the agreement, at least the general terms, of an agreement like we had back then. It worked back then. And we think it will probably still work with enough thought.
Yeah.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hobart. So from what I personally know about parking, I know we have a couple of, let's say, candidates for a building that used to be Forever 21. And one of the hot subjects was parking lot. And we are thinking about something like that, yes. I didn't know that was a previous conversation or plans had been pre-approved.
It was signed, the document was signed by us all in accordance with our negotiations. And we delivered it to the person with whom we... And he never signed it. There's a story there which I won't go into. But it would be nice if much of the property covered.
Thank you so much for your help. And I will definitely look into this. Yeah, because as I said, we need extra parking over there. I know. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's exciting.
Thank you.
The fact that there are four new tenants now, the restaurants, the three restaurants. And the eminent design building is just beautiful. Beautiful gallery. It's nice that they have exposure on two sides as far as traffic is concerned. And along with the musical events that you're planning to encourage more traffic, people sitting outside enjoying themselves. So I think, hopefully, this is the beginning of a renaissance. And we thank you for your management and involvement. And we look forward to continue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you everyone for your attention. Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is non-agenda public comments. And I will ask the City Manager if there are any comments remotely that he sees.
Sure. If any member of the public would like to make a non-agenda public comment, now's the time to do so. If you're participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. And Kristi, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not have any speaker cards.
All right. Anyone here in the audience that didn't fill out a speaker card that wishes to speak? Okay. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Yeah, good afternoon. My name's Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city. And I just want to mention a few things. Don't take too much of your time. I noticed at the last meeting, one of the council persons talked about co-compliance and after-hours type service. I've actually attempted to have after-service or after-hour service before, but it was unavailable to me. But it's commonplace for one of my neighbors that operates a business in the city for over a decade now. And I just want to emphasize that these people that run this business, I would never be able to do what they do legally with the city's permission, anyway. So it's just hurt me when city services are just, I guess, administered to select a few. And when others, even City Hall, you know, I would call and I would never get a return, but not never, but sometimes it would take days, two days at the least for a recall, usually. And that's kind of unusual, I would think. But again, I'm not asking for anything out of ordinary. But just the co-compliance issue that I wanted to talk about. I've submitted photos before. I've submitted video camera or video footage. And they don't want it. And now another council person is saying it's recommended that you do that. I don't see any call for it because it wouldn't be miserable with the city, anyway, under the terms that I know of. So I'm kind of rambling on. But anyway, that's my main point is... And the city, you know, does have a history of endangerment and so forth with the co-compliance. And I've had issues with co-compliance officers and the honesty and ethical values that they possessed or didn't possess. And I just, and then again, I mean, not again, but I have a neighbor across the street, 80-year-old woman, being born birthed with co-compliance complaints, probably brought on by the same people that called about mine. And just to caveat to this whole thing, I was accused of light pollution in my backyard. Apparently, I think that's what's doing the car. And apparently, co-compliance came at nighttime on a few occasions during the COVID thing. And I took photographs. But I was never allowed to see any of this. And the reason given by the legal department is that public good outweighs my right to see this evidence that you have against me. So I know it just kind of smells of council involvement. And anyway, I'm just kind of leering off the subject. But just on adjournments, too, I noticed that for transparency sake, I would like to see the City Council adjourn the meeting because that's never, I never an issue. So I know they're on the perkinon after the meeting, but why would they be able to adjourn the meeting in a transparent fashion? And when Item 3 comes aware of it, I'd like to speak on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We have no other speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. That concludes the non-agenda public comments. We will now go to council member comments. I will start it today. I have an important announcement to make that is a challenging comment for me, as you will hear in a moment, challenging from the sad, from the standpoint of it being a bittersweet comment. After nearly 20 years of public service to the city of Rancho Mirage, Councilmember Dana Hobart has submitted his resignation from the City Council effective tomorrow, November 19th, 2021. I am appointing Mayor Pro Tem Townsend and myself to a subcommittee for the purpose of bringing a recommendation to the remaining City Council members on how we fill this vacancy at our next regular meeting on December 2nd, 2021. The City Council on December 2, 2021 will consider and approve the process we as a council will follow to fill the vacancy. When Dana and his dear wife, Vicki, who was here to hear this announcement, discussed it with me, obviously, I was saddened. And I thought about preparing certain remarks today and realized that after a 25-year relationship, my remarks would be very extensive. And so I'm going to make them reasonably brief. And I'm going to save more adulation for another time. But I truly believe that Dana has contributed more to the City Council than any one single council person in the history of our city, at least certainly in my experience. He has been a voice of reason. He is astute. He is an avid reader. He has made his mark in so many ways, whether it be his passion that led to the ultimate development of the dog park or whether it even overhearing a comment about the observatory and then coming back to the council and saying, yeah, that's a great idea. And we now have a world-class observatory and library. His steady hand has been extraordinary. He has been a friend of mine. Originally, Dana and I played a lot of golf together. And I remember one day when he told me that he was going to run for the City Council. I was very active in my own real estate business. And I couldn't understand why he was going to be doing that. And thereafter, when we played golf and I would suggest that we have lunch, he said, no, I'm sorry. I've got the people's business to take care of. It was some years after that that Dana asked me to participate on the Planning Commission, which I ended up joining and becoming chair of for six years before, again, being asked to consider running for City Council, which I did in 2012. Again, so much of that was at Dana's behest. So my friend Dana, all I can say to you is we are so indebted for your service. Indebted way beyond any words that I can think of, way beyond anything that I could say to you at this moment. I would keep us here for many hours. And when I was finished, it would still be inadequate. So I can only say thank you. I know you're not going anywhere. I know you're still going to be available to consult. And we wish you nothing, nothing, but the very best.
Thank you, Ted.
God bless. Charlie, would you like to make any comments?
I certainly will. And I will say that I wrote them down so that I won't miss anything, Dana. So here I go. 20 years ago, or thereabouts, I remember Dana when he walked into our Charlestown Furniture Store in town here. And you introduced yourself as running for the City Council. And would you please support me in your election run? After talking about it and your views about the city and your strong outlook for the future, we did support you. That became a long...
The "we" is...
The "we" is Gordon Moeller and myself, who was also on this council and was a very good friend of you and Vicki for many, many, many years. And also, I wouldn't be sitting here also if it wasn't for your influence and guidance for me and my career here at the City Council. So I thank you for that, Dana. When you won the election and began your stellar career as council member and mayor, you changed not only the future of Rancho Mirage, but the entire Coachella Valley. I want to make that a very strong statement. Entire Coachella Valley. You had great influence from the beginning till now and you also will in the future. Your compliments are well-known here, are too many. As Ted said, I mean, we could go on and on and on and on and on. He just hit on a few. But the list here would be too long. The friendships you made along with those who did not agree with you are legendary. You have changed the footprint of this city, which will live on in its history, Dana, in its history. A lot of other, I don't think anybody else, as Ted said, could make that statement as he said it and I'm saying it. And what is here is, it's the God's truth. Well done, Dana. And we all know that you will still be in our thoughts along with being involved in the city you love. And you will be watching over us every day. So thank you, Dana. Love you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
Very generous.
Thank you, Charlie. Richard, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Do you want to go ahead? How are you?
Me.
Either one. Iris, do you want to go ahead first?
Sure. There's really so little that would be adequate in describing Dana's work, his work ethic and the contribution that he has made to our city and, as Charlie said, to the entire Coachella Valley. And I know Dana's always opposed to singing praises of any particular person or staff member. But there comes a time when it's beyond appropriate to sing someone's praises. And Dana is that person who deserves every accolade that we can bestow upon him. He was always innovative in so much of what he has done, starting back, you know, with eliminating the utility wires, which I know was it probably a struggle trying to get that point across and have everyone agree to it? When it came to not allowing the cultivation or sales of marijuana in our city, you know, Dana came up with the idea of, okay, there are a lot of people here who really need medical marijuana. And why should we deprive them? So we didn't deprive them. We provided to people who needed medical marijuana, even the ability, if they couldn't get it themselves, that we would contribute to having it delivered to them. And his bravery when it came to working through the CV link issue was beyond any of our imaginations. He was tenacious. He was smart in every manner. And he only had the city of Rancho Mirage's welfare to consider. And he made every opportunity available by emails and by speaking to educate people on what that CV link would be about and how it would affect all of us. And one more thing I would like to mention that Dana did that was so superb that it is really beyond any kind of description. He allowed and insisted that staff and City Council members be able to communicate directly with each other. And I don't know if most people ever realize how significant that really is. But if you've ever played telephone and one person starts out with a message and tells the next person and then the next person and then the next person. And when it finally comes back to the original person, it is totally different than what the person started out with. When we have the opportunity as council members to walk in to a staff member's office and sit down and discuss a matter or pick up a telephone and discuss a matter. And a matter that perhaps someone has come to us from the community, whether it's a resident or a business, something really significant that you don't want to have to pass down the line telephone style. It makes such a difference in communication. It makes such a difference with the rapport that we as council members can have with our public, with our residents, with our businesses. And I worked in many, many cities. And I've worked with staff members in many cities. And there is nothing more valuable than having this communication capability. And that was something that Dana put forth. And I can't tell you how much I personally appreciate it. And I know everyone I've spoken with has. I could go on and on with all his accolades. And I know he would not approve. But I certainly wanted to let everybody know that these are only a minute section of things that Dana has done. One of the big things he also did was to bring our speaker series to Rancho Mirage. And of course, most of us didn't even know that. It was done a long time ago. But it was brought with class and with dignity. And I have the honor of being able to serve on that committee with Dana. And his contributions through the years have been remarkable when it comes to selecting the appropriate speakers. So I personally want to thank Dana for everything he has done. He deserves a big applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris.
Thank you, Richard.
Well, thank you. Dana, 20 years ago, we just started this tour of Rancho Mirage. And it's been an exciting 20 years. I look back and those areas that we really concentrated on during that time. Go back to 2002 with Bruce Harry and you were responsible for a lot of the undergrounding of the power poles in Magnesia Falls. That really started the whole valley. That really started the whole valley going into underground utilities. And as we paid off our group, we eventually had undergrounding for the whole city. It was just one unique area that I think we kind of lose track of because it's so different from things that are going on these days. But we spent about $24 million, as I recall, in RDA money to do the undergrounding. So it's a great, great end result for our city. Looking at some of the other areas, and of course, everybody has already said, there's so many things that you were involved in, and I did that. But what I tried to do, I went back and looked at maybe 100 different issues that we discussed over 20 years and tried to come up with what I thought were some of the most important for me and the city, starting out with the undergrounding of the utilities. Second, the observatory. I think that's so important to the rest of the city and the valley to have that in our city. And I think people begin to recognize that Rancho Mirage is really the hub of cultural and entertainment center. And the observatory just is one additional item. One of the other items that I thought was very important had to do with the Agua Caliente tribe. Dana worked with Chairman Milanovich for a long time in trying to bring the two bodies together. And actually, Dana went to Sacramento to help the tribe get what they needed. So he was not only involved in the city politics, but he was also looking out for the other entities in the valley. CV link, no question in my mind that it was the number one issue that the city has experienced over the last 20 years. If it had not changed, if we had allowed CV link to go through, just go down to the edge of Rancho Mirage and see what's going up with these little barricades that run along the highway. And everybody says, well, what is that? And you say, well, that's CV link. Didn't you remember? You thought this was a great deal. So, you know, there are other items that I could go on and on. And I think that, you know, Dana, we honor you. There's so much you have done for our city. I don't think any of us, if we had another 20 years, could get through the issues that we have for the future. One last item that I think was very important to our city is the time Dana and I spent at the Ritz Carlton. We were on a verge of losing that hotel through bankruptcy. But as it turned out, we were able to negotiate for a long period of time and get the Ritz Carlton open. And I tell you, it's still one of the best revenue generators for our city now. Really, it's so important, but it's just one of a few very important issues that I look at and know that you involved yourself to an extent that a lot of us would never continue doing that. We just kind of give up and move on. Dana, I know you didn't do that, persevered, and because of that, the city is that much better. So we honor you today and certainly wish you the best of your future. And you and Vicki have a great life together going forward. And thanks for everything you've done for us, Dana. The city of Rancho Mirage, the residents of Rancho Mirage, the residents of the entire valley owe a lot to you and the work that you have done over that period of time. So thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you, Richard. That was very thoughtful.
Richard, you've said...
Some memories that leave me a little choking, but thank you for reminding me of some of those adventures.
Well, Richard certainly is capable of reciting that. Richard is the only person on this council that has seniority on you, and he remembers it all. And each of us, you know, have our fond memories. And as I said, your contributions are endless, and all of us could go on for a very long time.
And if I may just mention one thing, excuse me, that before we finish with everything, I think if we can all just stand up and give Dana some applause.
Dana, would you like to say anything at this point?
Yeah, a few words. Have to be careful. My wife's here. And I don't want to say anything to upset the greatest apple cart I've ever been with in my life and ever would hope to be. Vicki, thank you for being here. Thank you for helping remind me of some of the things that I've been involved with and as have others. There are some little stories with some of these. I think everything that I've talked about is, that I've made notes about, has been covered by memories that you are all too old to have, but you do have. That's a nice oddity. I would like to remind us of Richard Milanovich. Richard made comment about the situation that we faced back when the tribe was applying to the state for this very large object, the casino, the hotel. And we would get nothing by way of any source of funding that is common to hotels, not common to the gambling aspects, but to the hotel. And we were in a real dogfight. And one of the things I noticed about Chief Milanovich was that he was always courteous, always deferential without giving up his point. I just thought of a story that was... I'll have to bring it into it because it's a cute story. I was going to go up to Sacramento and testify against the tribe for them not to be permitted to move or to build a casino that was flush with our borderline. It didn't cross our border. If it crossed our border, the state rules and regulations for this project would have protected the city of Rancho Mirage. And I won't go into how it would have, but there were several ways that if the project was built one inch further this way, we would have an abundance of protections. But as long as it stayed on that side of the line, we had no protections. And I went up to Sacramento on two or three occasions and testified on a couple of them and met with the attorneys the Governor Schwarzenegger had. But Schwarzenegger was committed to giving the tribe what he felt was right. As I was getting prepared to go to Sacramento, I was flying up and Gordon, Gordon came up to me and he said, you're going up to Sacramento. You want me to keep you company? I said, yeah, I'd love for you to keep me company. And so we were both sitting in the airport when, waiting for our call. And we looked off to our left, we were straight out in front of the entrance into our plane, but straight off to our left, there was a very attractive young lady walking down. And I just happened to notice her. And she was attractive. And when I turned my head back to the center, here was Gordon looking straight ahead and not in the direction of this attractive woman, who was now down pretty much out of the way. And I asked Gordon, I said, Gordon, you can't be so gay that you don't at least look when an attractive lady walks by? And he says, oh, he says, you're missing the whole point. You may have been looking at her, but you see that fellow in uniform straight in front of us? And that, of course, was where his attention was headed.
Lucky for me, Dana.
Yeah, right. Anyway, that was one of the great stories. I think the story that I repeat more often to members of the council as they are elected and come onto the council was, when I got on the council, we had overhead electric lines. And anybody in this audience who lived here knew what that meant. It meant birds over your pool. It meant bird items everywhere throughout the city. And it was a very inefficient method of doing business. My thought was, why didn't Rancho Mirage have undergrounded their electric lines long ago? What are the priorities? So I went to the staff person in charge of it. And I said, I asked him, I said, why, why don't we have our electric lines undergrounded? And he said, that's on our list, Dana. That's on our list. And I said, well, is this a real list, written list? Or is this like one of these lists, something you're going to get to eventually? No, Dana, we don't have it in writing. It's going to be done. I said, well, I think it should be done now because that's the most important issue we have in the city. And we have the money to pay for it. I'll keep you posted, Dana. Don't worry, we'll get to it. And I felt quite frustrated that this extremely important issue was so readily dismissed. And so I said to him, we'll see. And I hadn't been on the council, I don't know if the record's in there somewhere, but maybe I'd been on the council a year or something. We have a workout line of everything that's new for us to go through so that we can read it and understand what we're doing, how much it costs, how long it lasts, and all that sort of thing, as we do still. Every, at every meeting, we have some of that. But he declined to bend. So fortunately, in the ninth grade, I took up typing and could type. So I went to my desk and I typed out a report on that situation and put it on our next You, Richard, are getting the reminder of the story, most of this you lived through by watching at least, as everyone did, except me. I was typing, typing out a document that laid out what we had to do. And then I put it on the agenda. The city manager at the time had never confronted some member of the public, some member of the staff, elected staff, engage in such action as to write a report, a work report on this and set it out and put it in motion. At any rate, we put it on, the city council has various authority, and one of them is what goes on the agenda. And so I put this on the agenda for us to build and, or not build, but construct overhead lines and take away, I mean, destruct them and add instead the overhead lines so that our city... I'm messing up my story. At any rate, we put it to a vote, and the council voted 5-0, as I recall, that we would eliminate all overhead lines and underground them. We had enough money to do it with even the undergrounding being paid, which was pretty unusual in those days. And somebody told me that it would never pass council, something like this. Council passed it just like that. And we became the only city in the valley to have undergrounded their, the former overhead lines. And I think we're still the only city that's done that. And every time I talk to another council member from another city, boy, do I wish we did this or that, but it was always the underground lines. And let me just end with one thing. I made a note with a few words of things that I thought were important to rehash and remind us a little bit. One thing of importance is the fact that back, I don't know, 10 years ago at least, across the freeway, there's all that vacant land. I've lost track of the numbers, but something like 2,000 or 3,000 acres of it were zoned in Rancho Mirage. And it was zoned, nothing, put anything you want in it. My thought was, is that if somebody builds one hotel over there or one little housing development over there, the zoning is over, it's whatever it was, and the city of Rancho Mirage will expand by the number of people living in that area. And as I recall, Pat Pratt, our then-city manager, Pat Pratt estimated, I asked him to do this, we put together a big, open meeting on this. I asked him to estimate the number of homes that would be added to Rancho Mirage in the in the event somebody with a few modern or modest building projects. And the number that stays in my mind, and I'm not 100% sure this is accurate, but it was substantial. It was that it was like 4,000, it would house 4,000 people who would be residents of Rancho Mirage, whose need for money and building and all of that would wipe us clean for years to come. And I thought that that's not right. The county should be taking care of that. And so I introduced a motion to return that property, that land, to the county. And the county accepted back that land. And each person can do his own math, but you can imagine the cost to us in the long run. And it would change the nature of Rancho Mirage significantly. So anyway, the council passed that. And we gave that land back to the county who eventually gave it to our neighbor next door. And so that's where it is. That's a story that I just always think about as to the value of having a council instead of just a staff. With a staff, you have X number. With the council, you have X plus five. That X plus five can bring into the consideration a great number of different thinkers than who had been there before. Anyway, it feels odd saying goodbye to you. I want to thank my wife, Vicki, who's over in that corner. She has helped me a lot in putting together ideas and how to express them and things of that nature. And I couldn't, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for you, sweetheart. And tell our dogs, and I include them as well. We wouldn't be here today because we'd be cleaning up a mess somewhere on our property from the dogs. But anyway, I love you all, I thank all of you. Our staff is just super, just magnificent. They do so much for us. It's technical and they do it right. And I'm so glad to have them as friends as well. And so therefore, I won't be here for the next council meeting. Let me, let me say thank you to all those who gave me the opportunity of public service. Thank you. And I apologize.
That's all right, Dana. Let me just say something. Everything that this man has done in all these years has been above board. The transparency that he delivered and gave both sides of every issue so everybody could see the yin and the yang. And also say about the CD link issue, he had the courage to go and tell the story throughout the city of Rancho Mirage. And he put it to a vote, which came back in the favor of everything that he said for the reason why that should not go to Rancho Mirage. So I just want to say, he not only had these ideas that he went out and said, this is the way it is. He didn't hide anything. You guys can make the choice. That took such courage. Thank you, Dana.
Indeed, Dana, thank you. Your vignette that you have recounted shows the depth of your vision and your sensitivity to the entire city of Rancho Mirage. We all have so much to be thankful for your participation over the years. Isaiah, would you like to make any comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Dana, I just wanted to tell you, thank you for all the support that you've given me since really I started at Rancho Mirage. And I can confidently say, when I describe Dana, he is the smartest person that I've ever encountered in my life. What's unique about him is it doesn't matter the topic. And with a city, you have a range of topics. It doesn't matter if it's financial based or planning based or community issue that we're facing. Dana has a unique ability to digest very complex information about any topic and provide valuable input. And from my perspective, I've learned so much about this job and about the city from you, Dana. I value our friendship and I'm glad that will continue. But I just wanted to tell you, thank you for all the support that you've given me and to city staff. And Dana's never wavered on wanting what's best for the city. People may have disagreed with his opinion on that, but it always came from a benchmark of what's best for Rancho Mirage. And as a staff member, that is an extremely easy environment to operate in. It's not politically motivated. It was truly if you came forward, and I tell staff today, if you come forward with a recommendation that is based on what's best for the city, that's how you go about things because that's what the council expects. And Dana, you set that policy over and over in many of the projects that we've talked about today. Rancho Mirage would not be what it is today, both fiscally and just the makeup of it, our streets, to our public facilities. So thank you for all the support you've given me and to city staff. And I will definitely still enjoy our lunches. So thank you for everything.
Thanks, Isaiah. That's well spoken, Les. Our city attorney has worked with Dana closely over the years, both of them being fellow counsel. I know that Dana was responsible, Steve, for you joining the city at one point. And you might want to reflect upon, you know, your relationship with Dana over the years.
Okay, I'll give the general, what is it? How are they rating movies now? The GP version, is that what it is? So I've never met Dana Hobart ever before I met him when he wanted to meet with me to talk about the city attorney's position. And so my secretary had these notes from a Dana Hobart, oh, Dana Hobart wants to meet you. And so I just, I never met a male named Dana in my life. So I just assumed this is a woman. And so I walk into Mission Hills Country Club and I said, I'm looking for council member Dana Hobart. And they point, like, it's over there. You know, like, he's sitting over there. And so I'm walking over there, I don't have my glasses on. And then he comes into focus and I think, oh my God, thank God, this is not a woman. It's not very pretty. So that was my first encounter with Dana Hobart. But since meeting, you know, after talking to him, I thought, wow, this guy's pretty smart, you know? So he's probably going to teach me a lot of things about the law or argue with me a lot. And so it was true. From day one, Dana and I have been arguing back and forth about even issues we agree on. Because he always has a different perspective. He's, and I used to always tell Dana, Dana, just because you yell louder at me doesn't mean you're any more right. That's what you criminal defense attorneys do. I can't do that. But most of the times, he's right. Well, I always tell him he's always right. But he's, but he's been a mentor for me, even in this area of the law. Because he has a different perspective about the law from his experiences as a trial attorney. You know, and everything that he argues has to be based on evidence and he expected me to do that as well. So anytime I had a conversation with him, it was like I had to prepare for a trial. You know, just to talk to him about a simple issue, well, a complex issue, like with Ritz Carlton, we'd go back and argue, unargue and argue endlessly. And then people would show up and we're like, yeah, well, we reached a consensus on this and this is how, you know, my, how I think you should do it this way. Not knowing that we went through hell to get to that point. But he's been a mentor. But the one thing I can say about Mr. Hobart, besides learning a lot from him through, you know, our constant debates we've had, is that he's aged me through, through dog years now. And I say that not in the sense of just, you know, growing old, but actually giving me a lot of wisdom in a much shorter period of time. Because everything was so intense with Mr. Hobart in a positive way. And so after I've left those meetings with him, I would leave thinking, God, I actually learned a lot from him. And learned a lot not only with respect to how to approach a particular issue, but how to argue it, how to present it, how to defend it. And that's what he taught me, you know, as, you know, as a colleague on the bar, but, you know, from that perspective of being a trial attorney. And I really appreciate that about, I appreciate that, that you did that for me.
Thank you, Steve.
But now we can actually be friends. Real friends. I look forward to that.
Well, thank you, Steve. I think every one of us on the dais can use the word mentor. Dana has mentored all of us in some way. He has contributed greatly to every one of our knowledge. And that happens to be a term that we can apply. And each of us can say thank you for that contribution, Dana.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else on the dais that I have met or I have missed that cares to say anything? I don't want to leave anyone out. If not, I'm going to continue at this point. We are going to skip over the city manager comments and I'll really go right to ask for a motion for the minutes of November 4th, unless there are any additions or corrections.
So move to provo?
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And the minutes of November 4th are approved. We will now go to the consent calendar. And if I may, Isaiah, would you handle that, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have six items on the consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1191, second reading, amending Title VIII, Health and Safety of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, Chapter 8.12, Garbage Collection, to implement Senate Bill 1383. Item number three is to approve a joint resolution making findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 as amended by Assembly Bill 361 and authorizing continued remote teleconference meetings of the city council and affiliated agencies and all other city affiliated Brown Act bodies. Item number four is to approve the closure of the library and observatory for the 2022 Rancho Mirage Riders Festival. Item number five are contracts. And item number six are demands. And before we go to the council, if any member of the public would like to speak on one of these items, now is the time to do so. If you are participating remotely, you would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Kristy, do we have any speaker cards?
No, we do not.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak on one of these items? Okay, we will go to our remote audience. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi. Again, my name's Brad Anderson. I live in the city. I just wanted to comment on your consent counter, item number three. This is concerning the AB 361, new law that's been implemented by the city or by resolution, I guess. And I'm opposed to this. In theory, it's a good thing, definitely a good thing for the public, but you don't need a law to allow the public access to your meetings. And I think the issues I have with this, as the city manager is probably aware of, there was a city meeting this week that I wasn't able to access because of a misprinted agenda, apparently. But again, all the contacts that I've contacted since then, and that was yesterday, I guess, I've yet to hear anything back. So as far as I'm concerned, AB 361, you perp law, you know? If that's the case. And that's, you know, I can't imagine I'm the only person, but maybe I am. But the only thing I can suggest, if you're going to continue with this pretext-type social distancing aspect, is to have the public or have access for the public in your chambers for every single meeting that you have with the city. That would allow members of the public to actually have a physical place to monitor the meetings, even if the council or the directors or the appointees weren't there. Because if you don't have access codes correct on the agenda or any aspect of the agenda is incorrect or your phone's dropped or the line's bad or whatever the deal is, you can avoid any type of litigation or any kind of potential litigation later on by just having a place that people can and actually physically go to. Because I could get a hold of City Hall because apparently you're closed at certain times of the day. So anyway, that's one of my aspects. And, and the whole thing about, you know, if a director's actually fearful for social distancing and staying away from the meeting, or even a staff member, if you're attending other city events or any event where you're asking the public, you're actually kind of a, it just looks bad if you won't actually go to your job or go to your appointed position or elected position. And I actually got to go feed some dogs out in the desert. I'm weary late. So, but just one last thing, just to coin a phrase that was said probably a decade ago, you know, when Dana's away, the kids will play. So I keep that in mind. I'm fearful for the future. But anyway, thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your comment. We have no one else that wishes to speak, Mr. Mayor, so I'll turn this over to the council.
All right, thank you, Isaiah. Is there anyone on the council that has any comments to make regarding the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as read and as talked about.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
We now are going to be going into recess and a closed session. And the city attorney will tell us what the agenda for the closed session is, if you would, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council is now going to recess in a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 regarding the existing case known as Vacation Rental Owners and Neighbors of Rancho Mirage, RM Vacation Rentals LLC et al versus City of Rancho Mirage et al. And the council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4 regarding five potential initiation of litigation items. And those are the items for closed session.
Thank you, and we are now in closed session.
It is 3:03 and the city council took no reportable action in closed session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.